I'm going to call this meeting to order for Tuesday, February the 10th at 7:00 PM. Will you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Alton Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Scully.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Warnock.
Here.
Everyone present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer, please? Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of the town of Rising Sun. Every meeting we have, God, I talk about serving in a Christ-like way, and I hope you will continue to guide our town in that way, God. I hope you will be with those overseas and those that are battling ISIS currently overseas, God, and I hope that you will be with ones that may be in need here in our town and in the state of Maryland and in the United States, God. You make miracles happen, and for those that may be diseased and sick, I hope you will be with them. I ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Next thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes from January 27th, 2015. Can I get a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make a motion.
A second. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes, thank you. Next thing on the agenda is public presentations. We have a Resolution 2015-01, which is a fee schedule modification, and that is our town administrator.
This is the resolution that I presented to you at the last meeting with one exception in relation to the question that Commissioner Scully had raised about a clarification on one and two-family dwellings compared to apartment complexes. So, on the screen behind you is highlighted the area that I changed, and now it states, whereas the town zoning code requires an inspection of all occupancies with the exception of one- and two-family dwelling units as defined in the International Building Code. So, our code does, our code technically says all buildings, period. The town has just, has never inspected one and two-family dwelling units. The intent here, and it goes on to say, prior to the change of a business occupancy or property ownership. Again, the zoning code was set out to inspect business occupancies when a new business comes in, to protect workers in that occupancy, and then also the general public if they're going to a retail place, and then if the ownership of the property were to change. If somebody sells a, like, when steak, steak end down the street, when they sold their property, they had to come in for an inspection, and we go down and do a general safety inspection. So, that's what that is there for. We read it in at the last meeting. I could read it again. You're not required to, or answer any questions, or whatever that you might have.
I would say that if it were the case that there were others in the audience that weren't here last time, it would probably be needed, but since we don't have anyone here that wasn't here last time, I think we can forego reading if it's okay with the board.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. So, can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2015-01, which is a fee schedule amendment and modification?
I should move.
I'll second that.
All in favor, or, excuse me, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens' input.
I'll make this real easy, I've got a little one here.
Mrs. Emsley, go ahead.
De Emsley, I am not a resident of town. At the meeting two weeks ago, I asked about the meeting minutes being on the website, and nothing has changed. I'm curious if anything, if there's any update. Still, the last meeting minutes that are posted are from August of 2013.
Yeah, we've had some discussion, I mean, on...
Calvin's been currently in the process of a very large grant, and was up here all weekend doing that, but we are going to get those minutes. We made sure the agenda was posted this time.
It was there, I did see it a couple days ago.
The minutes are quite lengthy. Marcia's done a great job of collecting those, and we will close that up and get those on there, too.
And I think some of those, Marcia, go back before you came on, so we have to find some of those electronically, rather than scanning them in, because if we scan them in, they're a lot messier. If we can find the original electronic copies, it'll be a better document.
I would, I would say, Ms. Emsley, we have had discussions about it and how we are trying to get it on as quickly as possible, because we all know how important it is. And it is good that even though for those residents that I know would rather see meeting minutes, at least that we do have the actual meeting on as far as taping, so you can be able to watch that as well.
I don't want to watch the whole thing, I just want to read what happened. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Staff reports. Chief?
He passed over himself.
Let's get myself... No, you're good, you're good.
I was kind of startled because of that. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. During the, it's been a while since I've been here, so the report includes quite a bit more than a normal meeting. We've had 432 calls for service since the January 13th meeting. We have also seen an increase in the drug activity in town. We've had numerous car stops and drug-related calls, which we are trying to stay on top of. And what you'll see is more arrests coming soon from drug-related calls for services. Public safety is paramount for the Rising Sun Police Department. Approximately two weeks ago, we had an incident that occurred at Rising Sun Middle School. The safety of the staff, the students, and anyone involved in Rising Sun Middle School is something that we take very seriously. And the way we handle these incidents is with the utmost of care for all that's involved and fairness. But, with that being said, it is our duty to make sure that those individuals inside the school that work there, attend there, and have to frequent there can do so safely. Lastly, you will see an article in the Cecil Herald, I'm sorry, the Cecil County Whig relating to the body cameras. I am at the point where I will be proposing by the next meeting the steps the police department will need to take to obtain those cameras. There were some obstacles that came about that I did not anticipate, but now we have a grasp on it, and myself and Commissioner Scully will be able to present that in a complete package at the next meeting. And with that being said, that is pretty much my report unless there's questions about any other incidents.
I have a suggestion.
Yes, sir.
The mayor told me just a few minutes ago that he and town administrator will not be able to attend the next meeting.
Okay.
So, it might be better if that was delayed until the mayor and the town administrator were both here.
Yeah, that was something I was going to bring up, Chief, tonight, was that myself and the town administrator are planning on attending a seminar in Annapolis, so...
All right. That's, that's okay with me. What I can do is I can put out an electronic version that you can view at your convenience, and we can discuss it at the next meeting.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
I know that watching the news, there's been a lot of talk in Baltimore City. Did they ever, do you know if they finalized what they're going to do with body cameras? Are they moving forward with it? Because...
My understanding of the Baltimore City situation, and it's been quoted in the Cecil County, in the Cecil Whig, I'm sorry, Jane, I'll correct it, it'll be quoted in a Whig, that the holdup with many of those departments is cost. I know Baltimore City wants the cameras, but they don't want to fund the project, and I don't believe there's been a resolution yet, but my understanding is the holdup with that project is cost.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. Town Administrator, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I do.
No report, you said?
Yes. There's a, there's a couple things that I want to, I want to continue to, what I started last month when we're talking about the reality of our financial situation, and that got a lot of attention. So, there's a couple pieces of information that I want to pass along to you that I think would be very beneficial to the board and to the residents. First of all, as part of our settling on the bonds and the ban, that's the vehicle that was used to finance a sewer plant, anyone who knows, who's in the banking industry knows that the IRS has a tremendous amount of paperwork and requirements that you have to do on that. And today, I signed a post issuance compliance procedures manual, and the reason why I'm bringing it to your attention is although the IRS does not require the elected body to adopt something like this, I think that we've all learned over the last decade or so that when we operate in the now and we get information, we tend to think that we don't really have to do anything with this information to protect future generations that replace us through this process. And we've all had to deal with this over the last couple of years of not being able to find certain things, not being able, not knowing that there's things that we committed to or things that we had to do. So, I'm going to be coming to you guys next, probably next month, with an update to our fiscal policy. If you remember, we adopted that back in 2010. I think this should be included as a chapter at the end of it, so future boards and town administrators know that there is an annual thing you have to do now that you're getting this kind of grant money and loan money from USDA. So, I don't want anybody getting in trouble in the future, so I wanted to bring that to your attention. The other thing is, at the last meeting, we had talked about delays in payment from MDE. We have since gotten 940, roughly $946,000 of money back from MDE. That is money that the town had paid out directly. We are currently also waiting for another $530,000 from MDE, but this is not quite as critical, because we're hopefully within a window where the contractor submits and MDE turns it around in time, and we don't have to go into our checking account to write those bills out. So, we have submitted $530,000 additional dollars to MDE, plus we are waiting for $256,171 from USDA as part of our reimbursement of other things that we pay for besides just the contractor. With that said, the other thing I wanted to do is, over the last couple of years, we're always dealing with these speculations and rumors that the sewer plant is, you know, there's some kind of financial issue with the sewer plant. The sewer plant project is operating under budget, within budget, whichever way you want to call it. The only time we run into problems is when we get delays in payments. And I wanted to give you an example of our last pay application that we just got from USDA today, and for the benefit of the residents, I wanted to, if you look here, the total contract price for this contractor to complete the project is $4,459,491.09. We just submitted an amount of $294,936 that just got approved from USDA. That's part of that five, that's part of that $530,000 that we're going to be waiting for from MDE. By point, as you can see, we, of the $4,459,000 project, there's just under $3 million left in the project for the contractor to submit. We got $4.8 million from USDA in financing and another $2.7 million from MDE. So, the money is there. It's a clamshell game moving it around, and it's a timing issue, but unless we run into a problem with the project not getting done by September 30th, we should be okay. The financing, the financing goals that were set out many years ago are coming to fruition, and so I just want to dispel this rumor that we hear every once in a while that the project's over budget and it's running out of money. So, that's one thing I wanted to show you. Over the last couple of days, I've been working on some grant applications, four different grant applications totaling $12.3 million. And this goes towards the report that I gave you folks back in January about the town needing anywhere from maybe $15 to $18 million of money over the next extended period of time, depending upon when the regulatory agencies come in and tell us we have to do certain things. So, the $12.3 million in grants that we're applying for, $2 million is to replace some defective water lines, $2.5 million is a secondary water tower, so that we don't have to always play games when there's droughts, whatever, we can have a reserve of water left over, and then $7.8 million for the new water line coming from Pennsylvania, for a total of $12.3. One of the things I want to show you in part of the grant, because this has been a big discussion item over the last couple of weeks with all of our water line breaks that we've had, let me bring up this for you. And I'm going to take us to the town of Rising Sun here. I'm using Google Earth for this. And the town of Rising Sun, I want to show you a couple things that are part of the grant application, and you're going to hear some of these things. You've heard it in the past, and they're relevant. This is an overlay map of what is called the priority funding map, and whenever you apply for money in the state of Maryland, they favor projects that are in a listed priority funding area. So, if you can follow along, the heavy yellow areas are the incorporated limits of the town of Rising Sun, and they are an approved priority funding area. The shaded area right here is in the incorporated limits of the town of Rising Sun, but it was never submitted as part of the priority funding area, because it's an old development that they thought they were going to come through, but they didn't. It's the Knutsen Track. And then all these other areas are areas that are part of the town's comprehensive plan, that if they end up being annexed into the town, we can get them put on the priority funding registry here. And this is very critical to any kind of grant monies that the town would want to get. So, the first thing I want to show you here is some items out of the, I'm calling it the defective water lines. And over the last couple of years, we've heard people complaining about brown water and the 4-inch water lines that we have in town, and we're doing a grant to try to replace roughly 10,000 lineal feet of defective lines in the town here. They basically consist of the older part of town and then the Valley View Development that although the waters, the water line is older, it's a larger water line, as you can recall, we've had a lot of breaks in that area in the last couple of years that have been very significant in the amount of damage that they have done. Over the last five years, the town has had 24 main or service connection failures over the last five years. And when you look at it, what's really interesting about those failures is, look where all those failures are occurring at. Those are all places where our guys have had to dig up the street and, let me zoom in a little more so they can get it on TV a little better. These are all areas that our guys have physically had to dig up the street, tear it up, put a cramp on the line. It's all old and aging defective lines, and we've been talking about this for many years of how we need to get some money to replace these. We're estimating the cost to be about $2 million, and not all of these lines represented have to be replaced, because I'll give you an example, some interesting things that the town did in the past. When you zoom in on Haynes Avenue here, there's a 4-inch water line running down Haynes Avenue, but many years ago, the town did put a 12-inch lay, 12-inch line right next to it, but they never connected any of the house service lines to it. So, even though we have all that water capacity in there, the house service lines are not hooked into it, neither are the fire hydrants on the street.
How long ago would you estimate they did that?
Excuse me?
How long ago would you estimate that they did that?
In talking to Ron, he said they were there when he got here, and Ron's been here about 12 years, so it, it goes back a while. There are 12-inch water mains up and down Walnut Street, but they're not connected to any service lines, any of the house service lines. So, even though in some cases we have bigger lines in the street, we're getting water main breaks on the old lines there, and think of how funny that sounds. They put new water lines in the street because they wanted to update it, but we're paying money years later to fix the old lines that are still in the street and have to be used because there was no conversion over to the 12-inch lines. Now, in fairness, those 12-inch conversions were done to circulate water around the town much better, which is, is an improvement in fire flow in some areas, but not when you've got a fire hydrant hooked to a 4-inch line in the street. The other thing that I wanted to show you that we've had to deal with quite often over the years is brown water here. We routinely get a lot of complaints from residents about brown water, and over the last five years, we've had an abundant amount of brown water complaints on Cherry Streets, on Reynolds Avenue, and Cooper, and Buckley, and Pearl Street. Now, there's been some other places that have had some brown water, too.
Mount Street.
Yeah. So, this happens on a regular basis, sometimes eight, nine, 10 times a year. We have had to, we have had to replace laundry for people, so forth and so on. So, you know, I think that's why when, when we and you as the elected body set forth to try to tackle all these issues, and you go about and you're building a sewer plant, you're, you're doing water lines and you're paving streets, understand why you get that resident every once in a while who just goes sideways with frustration, because they've been dealing with these types of things for, you know, I'm only tracking the last five years, they've been going back further than that. So, obviously, we've all talked about how over the years, these problems have caught up to the town and they're starting to multiply, and unfortunately, you know, we're the group right now, along with the residents, too, that are charged with trying to solve some of these things. So, I just wanted to give you a visual of how that looks. The other thing that I wanted to show you is, over the last couple of years, I've done some analysis with the help of Marcia, and Ron, and Pam Haynes, and we have done an analysis of the amount of water that's been produced in our wells over the last couple of years. And this, these are important numbers, because this has to do with revenue being lost and not getting favorable status with MDE. When you want to do any water line upgrades, they're not going to give you water line upgrade money if you're losing a lot of water. So, you go back to the year of January, the year of 2006, you see that the town produced 79,665,000 gallons of water in a year's time, and our residents were, we were drawing 218,260,000 gallons a day. As you look, the next year, we went up to 230,000, and then you start to see it dropping, 179, 196, 184, 182, and all the way down to 176,71,000 gallons per day of usage. So, we're having, people are being more conservative with their water, and the one thing is that at one time, when I first came here in 2007, we got a water capacity management study that was done, that was started prior to my arrival in '07, and they gave it to us, and it estimated a 30% loss in water. And what that means is, you would like to think in an ideal situation that, let's go back to one of those years, 2007, if you're producing 230,000 gallons of water a day, you would like to think the target would be to be billing for 230,000 gallons of water. But with a 30% loss in water, I'm not real good at doing the math real quick, but you can see, that's a lot. You know, that's what, a third of that water that's being produced is leaking in the ground.
69,000.
Yeah. Leave it up to a banker. So, you're talking 69,000 gallons a day of water that's being lost, which means when that water drains out of the tank, the wells automatically sense that the water in the tank is low, and they pump more water. So, it's, to some degree, our residents are using less water, but to a larger degree, we have caught up to all those underground water leaks over the years, and that's a testament to our public works guys that have done that, where our numbers are coming down significantly in that. And the other thing I want to do that we had to fill out was, oh, let me, let me give you an idea of, under our current billing, I also did an audit for the last year of where our water is exactly going in the system, who's using it. So, what you see is the amount of water that's been delivered to the town is 62,323,000. That matches the sheet that I just showed you for 2014. The amount of water that's being sold going through the town's meters is 37,900, or 37, 963,818 is going through our 5/8ths, which is typically residential meters, and then some small mom-and-pop businesses that just have a bathroom in them. And then we have 16,828,000 gallons of water going through our commercial meters, which range anywhere from Martins to some of the bigger apartment complexes or some of the larger businesses, for a total of 54,792,000 gallons of water. So, automatically, you can see that we've lost about seven or more million gallons of water. Where has that, we produced, we produced 7 million gallons more than what we actually built, so where is that going? So, then we fill out the rest of the chart, and we estimate that when we flush our fire hydrants, we end up exhausting about 50,000 gallons of water to flow the fire hydrants as part of testing. We've got our, our sewer lines are cleaned on a regular basis, especially in the spring or summer, so we're looking at 2,500 gallons of water that's used for that. Construction, I'm sorry, training and firefighting, we're estimating that about 8,500 gallons of water goes out to training and firefighting, and again, that's not just the water the fire company's using, they might be doing some training where they're drafting. That's water that they're using coming through our hydrants, and that's just an estimate. And then we have for construction, we have about another 7,000 gallons, and that is attributed to the paving projects that have been done in town. And then we have for the sewer plant, about 1,000 gallons, for a total of 69,000 gallons of water that's unbilled, but it's been authorized to be used. And then we get into water losses. Our water meters are, we have not, our system will tell us if we have any water meters that are malfunctioning, we have not had that. We estimate about 2,500 gallons a year, and that number could be low, the amount of people who pull up to fire hydrants and take water unauthorized here. And then you have about 17,000 gallons of water leaks, and that's just an estimate of how much water we think is running through the system. So, that comes out to, all the way down here to line nine, of 7,461,238 gallons of unmeasured water there, and that's what MDE is interested in. They want your water loss ratios to be about 10% or less. We're at 12% now, but remember I said only a couple years ago, we were at 30%? So, we've come a long way in resolving those issues. So, now let's look at what this means in terms of, just in the last year alone, when I just gave you that audit, we have about 631,682 gallons goes to all of our nonprofits, the churches, the fire company, things like that. They have meters there, but we do not charge them because they are a nonprofit. So, we have 631,682. That results in revenue or not collecting revenue of 5,500 on the water side and 6,184 on the sewer side. And then that residual loss of water that I talked about is... is $65,663 in lost water revenue and $73,721 in sewer revenue. So you see the numbers are a little bit high. Now, a little bit of a misnomer here. You probably really can't say it's a loss in revenue on this line item because it's not, it's not a loss in revenue because no one's using it. It's a loss in commodity inventory, I guess you could say. But it's not like our revenue could be higher because somebody's, they are using water and not being charged for it, but it's not our residents necessarily that are doing that. And then, as we're talking about this well production and all of those things, let's look at another thing we put together to enhance our status with the grant is sort of a quasi-water conservation plan that we put out on our Facebook pages last week to try to enlighten people and give a little bit more insight on to how beneficial it is to conserve water, especially for our end users. A lot of people don't realize, but the home kitchen accounts for 11% of the water usage in the home. And I'm not going to read or stop at all of these because a lot of these we've heard before, but I wanted to stop at some of the ones that get very interesting here. Bathrooms account for 75% of the water usage in the home. And an energy-efficient showerhead can save you up to 500 gallons per month. Now, remember, let's put it in perspective. Right now, our sewer and water rate for water and sewer, because when you use water, you get billed for the sewer, you're talking about $18 for every 1,000 gallons. So when you're looking at your bill being $140 or $140 or $200 gallons, or $200, there are some ways to hack off $18 and $20 off your bill very easily. What is some water-efficient showerheads here? You can put food coloring in your toilet tank to make sure that your toilet is not leaking. If you take the lid off, put the food coloring in there, and you see food coloring in the bowl, now you know that your system is leaking water. That can account for up to 300 gallons a day. Remember, the magic number is every time you hit 1,000, it's costing you about $18. So there's $300 a day on a leaking, or 300 gallons a day on a leaking toilet. Again, it depends upon the volume of the leak. Brushing your teeth, shutting the water off. Instead of sitting there brushing your teeth and letting the water run, that can save four gallons a minute, and that's 200 gallons a week for a family of four. Turn the water off while you shave. Doing your laundry, make sure your washing machine is filled, is, you know, don't run a small load, or at least change the setting on the load because laundry makes up to 14% of water consumption in the home. Some things about landscaping and exterior gardening. More plants die from overwatering than underwatering. So always keep that in mind when you're watering plants. Make sure you're not doing it too much. Just adjusting the blade height on your push mower, your lawn mower, can make a big difference in the amount of water your grass needs and your tendency to want, to feel like you need to water it. Your water needs to be watered, your lawn needs to be watered when you walk across it and you can see your footprints in the grass. If you don't see your footprints in the grass, your grass is relatively healthy and you don't need to water your lawn. Swimming pools, your swimming pool, if you have it, should only lose no more than a quarter of an inch of water per day based upon evaporation. When you fill your swimming pool up, don't fill it to the maximum level. Keep it down a couple of inches. That can be a couple hundred, you know, 1,000 gallons that you're using. And then on your pool filters, a lot of people use sand cartridges or sand filters. That requires water to clean them out. If you convert to a cartridge filter, you can save a lot of water in that. A shout-out to our local car wash. If, you know, go to a car wash, they recycle water. And the car wash in Rising Sun does recycle that water on a regular basis, so that helps us. You know, you can save water when you clean your fish tanks, when you give your pets water, you can, when you change the water bowl, you can recycle that. Know where your master water shut-off valve is located in your house. If you break a line in your house, you know, if you're running around the house looking for that water shut-off, that's a quarter-inch pipe of water that's just flowing, and that's going to cost you a lot of money. Leaking faucets can waste up to 20 gallons a day. And here's something, when you talk about that quarter-inch stream or quarter-inch pipe that, you know, you broke off on your sink or something, a 1/30 seconds of an inch stream, which is basically the thickness of your fingernail, if that is running for 24 hours straight, that can flow 6,166 gallons per month and costs you $54 just on the water side. A one-inch stream of water, which is the thickness of a paperclip, can flow up to 24,700 gallons a month, costing you $216 in your water bill. An inch stream of water, which is the thickness of a pencil, can waste about 99,000 gallons per month, costing you $863 in your water bill. And a quarter-inch stream, because you broke the pipe and didn't know where the shut-off valve was, can waste about 400,000 gallons per month and cost you $3,488. So that's, you know, every day, do something to try to save water. Because a town of Rising Sun gets people contacting us all the time saying, "My water bill is so high, I don't know what's going on." We go on the computer, we can tell that they have a running toilet or a running line, and they say, "There's no way, my toilet was running, but there's no way it could cost me that much," you know, in water. This is, you know, some proof here that it really can. So I just wanted to give you those tips, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Commissioner Warnock was laughing because I unfortunately had a water main break in my basement and lost a significant amount of water because I didn't know where my shut-off valve was.
It'd be worth noting that was a half-inch line, too.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for that. I'm marking your comments off. No speaking tonight. I'm going to do the mayor's report now. My report is pretty brief. I attended the mayor's winter conference in Annapolis. It was a great, great, great conference. I learned a ton of stuff. I was mentioning Commissioner Scully on the way up to the meeting tonight that I want to sit down and meet with her and possibly Chief Peterson. It was a lot about community policing and emergency management. And there was a lot of different things that the speakers, they had three police chiefs, one from Salisbury, one from New Carrollton, and one from Aberdeen. And they spoke on community policing and how they get their community involved. And some of the ideas are pretty neat. So I would like to sit down and talk with you about maybe implementing some of them here in Rising Sun. I wanted to commend Commissioner Scully and her family for the police breakfast. It was absolutely amazing. I said this once before, but it's amazing how a phone call between each other can turn into such a great event. I also wanted to say a big thank you to Martins Food Markets for sponsoring that event as well. And I received today a letter from the Sheriff's Office of Cecil County. It says, "Dear Mayor Marion, on behalf of the Cecil County Sheriff's Department, I would like to thank you for the law enforcement breakfast that you and Commissioner Scully hosted last week. This is a very encouraging event and was greatly appreciated by all who attended. Your support of the men and women of Cecil County Sheriff's Department is invaluable. We're looking forward to working with you all in the future." And that was signed by Jerry Widows, who is the chief deputy. The next thing I wanted to bring up is that I am working with Desiree Davis on a events calendar for the town. I am hopeful, I was speaking to Commissioner Warnock about getting movies in the park dates set, not necessarily movies of what we're showing on those dates, but to make sure that we can get it out early this year. That possibly what I can do is post on social media and also on our website, as well as have a couple of copies here, or a few copies here at Town Hall, of basically a calendar that marks certain dates that we're going to have these events going from our Movies in the Park to our Fall Spooktacular to the Color Run that we're going to be doing this year. So I'm excited about all that. So that is my report tonight. So I'm going to ask the Historical Preservation Commission if they have a report.
Our meeting is tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Come. Join. Thank you, Dave, for your renewal.
Thank you.
Sadly, Commissioner Warnock is the only member of that board that belongs to the historical commission. We should change that.
Thank you. Any old business? Any new business? Commissioner Althanreth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not much has happened in the past couple of weeks, except we did have a kickoff meeting last week with KCI Engineering about the new development of our planning and zoning board's maps. We went over that, and they're underway with that project. We also discussed maps with the streets and sidewalks that they're going to be looking at. We're going to try to post that on the website and on...
It's right there now. I have it up there for you.
Well, I mean, what I was going to mention was when residents see these people out wandering their streets in their neighborhood, don't get alarmed, but feel free to call the chief and ask him if somebody's supposed to be out there. But we will try to post the date that they're going to start coming out. This is a good time for them to come out and start looking at the streets and sidewalks and the stormwater and utilities and everything. So the ones in red are the streets that they're currently going to be evaluating. They still needed to get with Ron. Our public works guy was sick at the time of our meeting, so they, KCI engineers, still need to meet with Ron to finalize a couple of streets that we had some questions on. So this, this project that we approved the money for just a few weeks ago is off and running, and it's not going to be dragging along. The other thing I wanted to mention tonight is to remind everybody about this Thursday's meeting at Perryville Fire Hall. Department of Transportation representatives will be on hand to give information about the proposed Mark Train Maintenance and Storage Facility that Cecil County, as I mentioned before, it's a win situation for us. It's going to be a big facility, a lot of jobs from the beginning of construction all the way through to long-term commitments that everybody should come out, get the information on so you know what's going on. But I highly recommend supporting this project. It's not only going to help the town of Perryville, but the all of Cecil County. Anybody that's a rail commuter, we're kind of stuck in the middle between the stop and start points, north and south. And this will really help close that loop. And like I said, it's a big economic generator for us, too. So that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor. Calvin, do you want to, is there anything I may have missed on the maps that you wanted to point out to anyone?
Just right before the meeting, we got notified that they're going to start the project tomorrow.
Okay.
Walking the streets is starting tomorrow.
Okay, good, good.
Thank you, Commissioner Althanreth. Commissioner Scully.
I have just a brief report. Sorry, I have a cold also. I'll be meeting with the Arts Council in the next couple of days to talk about fundraising opportunities and things that we can do with the kids. And again, picking up on art contests that relate to what we wanted to do with the National Drug Facts Week. So I'll be meeting with those in a, in a, meeting with the Arts Council in a couple of days. And I was invited to participate on the board for STEPS Recovery Resources, so I'm looking forward to that. And the breakfast was great, and hopefully we can do some more throughout the year. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Scully. Commissioner Walker.
The sewer plant is moving along. I'm happy with what's happening there. I feel a lot better about our financial status since we've gotten the little over $900,000 from MDE. The thing that concerned me so much about that is we were at the bottom of our reserves before we got that. So we still, in my opinion, have to be very careful in what we spend money for until this sewer project is finished, or at least paid for. One more thing, this has nothing to do with the sewer plant. We're with the town of Rising Sun. This is a copy of the Wednesday, February 4th wig. That's my daughter, who has just become the first female fire chief in Cecil County. I'm very proud of her.
Wow, I didn't know that. Great job.
Travis put this in my box, so I have a copy of it.
I did not realize that was your daughter. Congratulations.
Yes, that's really big Georgian. And I want to say on behalf of the town that you can extend to her congratulations, too. That's awesome achievement. And that concludes the commissioner reports. No, I'm just kidding. Commissioner Warnock.
I actually don't have much to report on tonight, or really anything. The one thing I will add to what the town administrator was speaking of on the sink faucets and such, I mean, four gallons a minute on a sink. You've got an old sink, because most of them are about two and a half now. But even that said, they have aerators now that are as little as a gallon a minute that still, for like bathrooms and stuff, still work pretty well. I mean, we, years ago, actually started replacing all the aerators in our bathroom sinks with one gallon a minute and the kitchen sinks with one and a half. And went to like a front loader washer and such. And then the showerheads of the one and a half gallons a minute. And all combined, I think we saved about 40% on our water bill. Like, we reduced our water consumption by 40% from the time we moved in until, you know, pretty much ran out of things to make use less water. So, I mean, it's easy to, it's really not that hard, and it's not much of an impact on our lifestyle. I mean, like, the, at two and a half gallons a minute, you have water splashing out of your sinks when you're just trying to wash your hands. At one gallon a minute is actually quite controlled comparison, you know. So, and then, of course, the kids don't have as much opportunity to flood the bathroom when they're four years old and running the sink for a long period of time when it's only a gallon a minute. But no, I don't have, between the weather and work, I don't have much to report on tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. I did want to commend you for your work that you're continuing to do on our trail system. I read in the newspaper a great article about what we are going to have down there, so hopefully...
Did you like your presentation?
Yes, yes, very much so. Commissioner Warnock brought me back some, and Jane brought me back a baseball that they found encased in mud, and put it on my desk. So thank you so very much for that. I did want to add, before we close tonight, I mentioned that myself and the town administrator won't be able to make the next town meeting. I'm completely fine with Commissioner Walker chairing that meeting as vice mayor, if that is the board's pleasure. I did invite Commissioner Warnock to attend, but he has not yet been able to tell me if he will be able to make it because obviously, he's in charge of economic development, so...
If we find out that both you and Commissioner Warnock cannot be at the meeting, then I would suggest that we cancel the meeting.
Okay. We will follow up to see where we're at, possibly in the next week or so. I did want to add that I forgot to mention, I gave you all a supplementary, well, not supplementary, a preview of what the governor brought forth as a proposed budget this year. You will see that initially, he was going to decrease highway user funds yet again and received a lot of feedback because he did a campaign promise to raise highway user funds. So it is my understanding that in a supplementary budget, he included an extra $19 million for municipalities, which will bring it up to a total of $26.1 million, which is great. He is taking that money, from my understanding, out of the Transportation Trust Fund and putting it towards highway user funds for the municipalities. You will see, the one thing that I was a little disappointed about is they are decreasing the amount of grants available for program open space. It was up to $22,000 last year, and now it's down to $14,000. So there are a few things in here, but I just wanted to give this to you guys so that you will be able to see where we're at right now. And I did have a great meeting, I forgot to mention this as well. I had the opportunity to go to a dinner reception at the governor's mansion and meet with him and talk with him a little bit, and invite him to come to Rising Sun, hopefully this summer. So that would be exciting. Anything else to come for the board this evening? Hearing nothing, meeting adjourned. Oh, motion to adjourn, excuse me.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.